All right, welcome everyone to the March 5th, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sherman.
Here.
Counselor Clay.
Here.
Counselor Lehman.
Here.
Counselor Whiting.
Here.
Mayor Tauckey.
Here. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening, counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second by Counselor Clay, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consent business, anything to remove from consent to discuss tonight? Counselor Clay.
I'd like to remove 4C1.
4C1? Counselor Lehman?
Move the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
Second by Counselor Whiting, any discussion? Mr. McNeil, would you please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 4A1 approves ordinance number 865, a text amendment regarding assisted living housing facilities. 4C1 was removed from consent agenda. 4C2 approves the purchase of five police interceptors and one chase vehicle from Nelson Auto Center in the amount of $156,124.71 in accordance with a state of Minnesota contract 37669. 4D1 and 4D2 authorizes the hiring of Christine Lucien as administrative assistant in the Public Works Department at Step E Grade Four and Michelle Lindsay as human resources specialist at Grade F, excuse me, Step F, Grade Six of the 2013 Non-Union Pay Plan, both contingent upon pre-employment background checks and pre-employment physical and drug test results. 4F1 approves the payments of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $1,186,021.4. 4F2 approves minutes of the city council meeting of February 12th, 2013. 4F3 approves resolution number 7282 authorizing execution of IRS Form 8283 acknowledging the Burma High donation and allows the city administrator to sign future similar forms. 4F4 authorizes the application, grants a wine license and an on-sale 3-2 malt liquor license to Mr. Pig Stuff LLC, 1561 First Avenue East. 4F5 approves the notice for public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on March 19th, 2013 to consider a contract for private development and the business subsidy agreement with Rosemont, Inc.
Any discussion on those items? Beyond how excited I am for Mr. Pig Stuff to have a liquor license? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anyone out there who would like to talk on a subject tonight that is not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Item number six, public hearings, we have none this evening. Seven, business removed from consent agenda, that was 4C1, is that correct?
Yep.
Counselor Clay.
The issue was that we have two-hour parking in front of an area just south of the railroad tracks on the west side of Home Street. It's being asked to be changed back to, or was changed to two-hour parking, now they're asking for some of those lots to be changed back to eight-hour parking. The quest is, or complaint is by a company called My Brother's Keeper who is just a half a block north of these parking sites. Just a quarter of a block north of the railroad tracks. If, and their concern is that their employees want to park in these spots all day. There's an additional 10 parkings, eight-hour parking spaces, just another few steps south on Home Street, on the, on the west side of the street, and there's a full city parking lot on the east side of Home Street. If they're, My Brother's Keeper's employees can't walk an extra 20 or 30 steps to park their cars, thereby leaving on-street parking spaces for customers, for the businesses in downtown, then I would think that My Brother's Keeper should just allow that employee or those employees to park right in front of their storefront, their, their customers, if any can find somewhere else to park, I guess. It has, I see no reason why we should be changing our parking ordinance or parking policies here just to, because one company wants their employees to be able to get there 30 seconds sooner.
Mr. McNeil, Mr. Looney?
I've had, I took, I think, the original call from the business that had the six spaces and they were eight hours. And that business did not have the parking turnover and so requested. We looked at going to all two-hour, a mixture of those, and it was felt at the time that if we went to all two-hour, it would be more easily understood. That change took place, as you indicated, the business that you had mentioned called and was very concerned about the inability of their employees, some of whom apparently have some mobility issues, that they would have to walk further than that, and it just boils down to the proximity of those spaces. They have indicated that it's infrequently used for the original purpose of retail shop. We acknowledge that. One thing that we have noticed is that it does provide for clearer visibility for eastbound traffic on Second Avenue as they're turning south without those parking spaces being full. People don't need to nose out into traffic, but it's a compromise in terms of what you want to see and what you want to do. It is a convenience for those people who had been used to that as all-day parking, but it's also an issue that we needed to come up with for a solution to turnover in the retail space. What we thought in terms of keeping two, two-hour and making the remaining four eight-hour was an attempt at a compromise, but you raise a valid point as well.
I guess I was under the impression that this was in front of their spaces, that it was, I got my geography mixed up, so this is not in front of their, their building where we're putting the eight-hour ones back in?
Correct, it's in front of Tupelo's, which is the gift shop to the south.
Okay.
So, they're fine with people being able to park in front of their place, but don't care about the fellow businessperson half a block up the street? So, that's my issue.
Counselor Whiting?
Is the main parking lot, the city parking lot across to the east, is that an eight-hour parking?
Correct.
Counselor Lehman?
What's the parking on First Avenue?
First Avenue in the downtown area?
Yep.
It's two-hour and there are some shorter, do we have any 30 minutes in there?
No. We, we kind of cleaned up that, if you remember, about a year ago. And everything kind of north of the railroad tracks was about two-hour parking. And everything south is, was eight-hour, with the exception by the library and Stan's Museum. And then now we had two requests, one by the Lewis Street Building, when the Dr. McGraw business came in, and Tupelo's.
Am I reading this map correctly, that there's four of them now that are eight-hours?
That's proposed.
That's proposed.
Everything at this point, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Lehman, are his two-hours. That was as a result of your action and our recommendation back in November.
Do we know why they didn't want them in front of their building?
I, Mr. Mayor and Counselor, I don't know that we'd want to set that precedent in the downtown retail core to have eight-hour parking in front of any business because at that point it just shifts parking demand. We've tried to keep the blocks north of the railroad track in the core as two-hour to encourage turnover.
There shouldn't be, it's my thinking, there shouldn't be any employees working in the downtown business district that are parking on-street, in the downtown business district. They should all be encouraged by their employers to find other places, not on the street, not in front of other businesses, you know, to park for the day.
And walking across the street is okay?
I think so, yes.
I, I, I was saying that as a statement, sorry. Counselor Whiting?
Is there room to split this up a little bit? So, we can balance it a little more, three and three, or three, three parking spaces at two-hour and three at eight-hour, so we can balance that?
The reason that it was two and four is just there happened to be light poles in front of two of them that could be easily signed these, otherwise we would have to wait until the spring thaw and then get into putting in signposts.
Counselor Lehman?
I'm confused. Let's see here, we've got, we used to have eight-hour parking.
Yes.
And everybody was used to that, but then we changed it to two-hour parking. And obviously, it's, for some, it's not working, so they're requesting eight-hour parking in certain areas. And then the recommendation from our traffic review committee is to change a couple of them back to eight-hour.
Or four of the six.
And at the same time, I, you're a member of that, correct? And then 30 seconds ago, you were telling me that we want all of the downtown to have two-hour parking.
North of the railroad tracks.
North of the railroad tracks.
Which this is?
No.
Okay, and then I've got.
These are the lots, spaces just across.
Oh, I see. So, this is right by the old bank up here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's eight-hour parking here and there's eight-hour parking here.
Okay, so what are we on the north side of the tracks?
Yep, two, well, what we're talking about changing is on the south side of the tracks.
Yep, but what are we on the north side?
Two hours.
Two hours.
For all of it?
Yep.
Okay.
This is just one of the few retail locations that's south of the railroad tracks.
Counselor Clay, do you have a motion or anything that you would like to forward?
Well, actually, I think to suit me, we would do nothing. Give it the way it is.
What's the best direction you want for that?
If you don't want to make a change, then just no action.
I have one more question.
Counselor Lehman?
Do we know if, what number of businesses on the south side of the tracks don't have off-street parking for the employees, other than the city lot?
Which businesses don't, Tupelo's does not, the ones on Lewis Street. There is some off-street in Dr. McGraw's building, but not enough for everyone. So, there are some that do park on the west side of Lewis Street, it is eight-hours. South of the, or north of the rail, of the parking lot.
Yeah. There's not a lot of businesses that have parking, other than our parking lots. So.
Our parking lot adequate?
There's, there's usually, there's openings.
There's plenty of parking in there, yeah. There, there are always spots when I go by. Anyone have a motion? All right, we're going to move on to, um, item number seven, biz, oh, sorry, that's business. Item number eight, sorry, recess for economic development authority meeting, I intend a motion to recess. Counselor Lehman?
Motion to recess the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Counselor Clay?
Second.
Second by Counselor Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Whiting?
We'll call a meeting, the March 5th, 2013, meeting of the Economic Development Authority to order. Kim, can you please make note of the roll?
Yes, Mr. President.
Can I, item number two, Mr. Lehman?
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Lehman, seconded by Clay, is, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, setting a public hearing date for Emerson Development Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, the sole action on your agenda tonight is to also call for the EDA to hold a public hearing, which would be a joint public hearing with the city council to consider the Emerson Development Agreement and Business Subsidy Agreement, which is part of the proposal which has been discussed regarding Emerson and Rosemont Industries. As you'll recall, February 12th, you held a public hearing and approved tax abatement, but that was contingent upon having an executed development agreement. This is your opportunity to review that. The development agreement is still in the process of being negotiated and will be available to you prior to the public hearing. So, the request again is to call for the hearing tonight.
Anybody? Mr. Clay?
President, I would move to direct that the attached notice be published to call for a public hearing at 7:00 PM, March 19th, 2013, to consider a contract for private development and business subsidy agreement contained therein with Rosemont, Inc., the Minnesota Corporation.
It's motion on the table. Ms. Sherman?
I'll second.
Moving seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lehman?
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, March 19th, 7:00 PM.
Motion on the table?
Second.
Seconded by Clay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion, all right, pass.
Thank you, President Whiting. We move, we reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting. We move on to item number 10A1, discussion of transit funding and governance issues. Mr. Leek?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. If you'll excuse me for a second, I'll pull up the presentation. All right, thank you again. By way of introduction, the purpose of tonight's presentation and discussion is to get direction from the council in total about some governance and funding issues that are facing us as well as our partners in Prior Lake and Scott County. I think I noted in the report for you that last Monday, the Prior Lake City Council held a workshop. Administrator McNeil and I were in attendance at that workshop, as well as Deputy County Administrator Leslie Vermillion, who's here with us tonight for background information if that was needed. And at that meeting, the direction to Prior Lake City staff was to begin exploring or having discussions with Southwest Transit and Minnesota Valley Transit about the potential of consolidation or merger of services. So, with that, I'll launch into the presentation. Let me also note Jane Kansir, Assistant City Manager from Prior Lake, is with us tonight, and I appreciate her presence as well. I also want to credit her for much of the information that's in the presentation. I've borrowed her slides liberally and modified them so that you see your logo rather than Prior Lakes. Also on the table, you have a draft copy of the Scott County Transit Operations and Capital Plan, which at the Transit Planning Team and Transit Review Board, we've spent many months putting together. And it is the subject of some of the slides that I'm going to go through. If you have questions during the presentation, please stop me, or if you have questions for Ms. Vermillion or Ms. Kansir, feel free to invite them to the podium as well. Again, the purpose is to discuss the current state of transit. And in this case, we say Shakopee, but as I noted, our partners, at least in Blue Express and all of the associated capital investments, have been Scott County and Prior Lake as well. Some of the issues we've been wrestling with have been, what's the role of the Scott County Transit Review Board? For those of you who weren't present, originally, we set up two boards. One was a staff team, the Transit Planning Team, to do some of the grunt work, if you will, in planning for and developing and implementing transit service. And the second was a group of elected officials, the Transit Review Board, to make recommendations to the respective city councils, to the county board, and so on. Through those bodies, we've done in 2005, a unified transit management plan for Scott County. We updated that in 2008. In 2010, we did a Scott County Transit Capital and Operations Plan, and as you see tonight, we have an update. Over the last several months at least, we've noted a difficulty in getting elected officials to participate. Some of that relates to where the communities are situated. Prior, or, excuse me, Jordan and Belle Plaine don't have direct transit service. Elko New Market is on the 35W corridor, about seven and a half miles from the Lakeville Park and Ride, so they don't have a real vested interest. So, we've wrestled with what should happen to the Scott County Transit Review Board. I should say, the Prior Lake City Council suggested that we have discussions with Southwest and Minnesota Valley and that that TRB may be the mechanism through which to do that. What kinds of changes should we have in transit governance? What do we do about future funding, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. The Metropolitan Council's posture or relationship to opt-outs, as we're called, our ridership, park and ride use, combined mitigation air quality grants and their status, the County Transit Improvement Board, which I know you are aware of. Five of the seven metropolitan counties excluding Carver and Scott belong to CTIB. And the current governor's funding proposal, and I should note that there are at least two or three, I think it's three now, separate proposals related to raising additional funding. Representative Hornstein and Ron Earhart introduced another one today. Our current transit structure in Scott County is that we have four separate providers. Shakopee is a separate transit provider. Prior Lake is. We have joint powers agreements related to the Blue Express. Scott County has a separate transit arm. We do contract with them here in Shakopee for a circulator service. They have in the past contracted with Prior Lake for a summer service as well. Scott County also provides medical assistance or ADA kinds of transit. And Savage is, of course, a part of MBTA, Minnesota Valley Transit Association. We have worked together, but we are functionally independent. As I noted with the TRB, it has no decision-making authority. That rests with each of the city councils, the county board, and so on. Some of our capital improvements or accomplishments, of course, are the South Bridge Crossings Transit Station. We opened that in 2007 with 513 spaces. It really was a partnership of federal, state, regional, and local funding that brought that to fruition. And the ridership through South Bridge has continued to grow since July of 2007. Also, there was the construction of a bus-only transit advantage ramp that opened in 2009. It gave direct access from South Bridge Crossings to 169 and, believe it or not, shortened those trips by about 10 minutes or so, depending on when we take those times. So, it was a pretty significant investment. We also, of course, last year, opened Eagle Creek Transit Station. It has 563 spaces. It has room for further expansion if needed. Both of these are onsite parking. There are no parking structures. Again, a partnership of several funding sources. We mentioned regional park, um, funding there, but I think we should note that the funding that we thought was provided in the form of regional transit capital funding actually was national transit database funding that Prior Lake and Shakopee had accumulated. And that was the contribution that came through the Met Council to fill part of that gap. Marshall Road Transit Station is scheduled to open later this year. It will have 400 park and ride spaces. It too is a partnership. Scott County acquired a portion of the site. A portion of the site was acquired by MinDOT using Chapter 152 bond funds. MinDOT actually owns a portion of that site, and the 400 park and ride spaces are required as part of the grant for that. The bids were just opened today, and I believe a low bidder was identified for the project. If you have specific questions about that, I see Lisa freezes here too, and she probably has more detail than I do. Little bit about transit ridership. In these pie charts, you can see transit ridership by regional provider, and we are a regional provider. You can see that Metro Transit, through its bus and rail services, provides about 85% of the rides in the region. Where it says MTS, I believe that 5% is actually contracted service. So, someone like Maple Grove contracts with Metro Transit Services for their ridership. You see the orange slice labeled STP, those are the suburban transit providers. In 2011, we provided about 6% of the rides. Some other transit providers, about 4%. On the right-hand side, in 2011, the suburban transit providers, by percentage, by far the largest is MBTA, Minnesota Valley Transit. The second largest is Southwest. Third is Maple Grove, and again, Maple Grove contracts with Metro Transit for their service. Plymouth, and then Shakopee and Prior Lake through the Blue Express primarily represent about 2% of the riders. In terms of our ridership increases, this gives you a pretty good indication of what has occurred since 2007. I believe from 2010 to 2011, we had an overall increase in Blue Express ridership of around 20% for this past year increase. It was about 9%. We were the fastest-growing commuter service in the region, although obviously, we don't carry the greatest number of rides. Here in Shakopee, we have a second component, and that is the circulator service. It carries around 35,000 riders a year, if I recall my NTD report properly. And that has grown at a much slower pace, but it is growing. Here you see, in the bar chart, general public ridership, ADA ridership. I know the colors here are a little bit hard to see. Shakopee, dial-a-ride, Prior Lake dial-a-ride, in other words, folks boarding the dial-a-ride service from those communities and medical assistance. And as you can see, that has increased. And one of the major factors in that increase, I think you probably know, is that in 2007, Carver County and Scott County joined forces in providing transit services, and that provided a tremendous increase in the amount of riders that they've been able to carry. The ADA service that the county provides is one that frankly was triggered by us when we transferred our ridership from a dial-a-ride service that was operated for years here in Shakopee to a scheduled circulator service. That triggers the requirement for ADA service, and ever since that triggering event, Scott County's provided that. This just tells you from 2010 to 2012, how many people used the park and rides and where they were located. Certainly, the largest number are in Shakopee and Savage. The increase in Shakopee and Prior Lake were pretty substantial, and you can see the other communities as well. With the Marshall Road Transit Station, we will have something in excess of 1,400 parking spaces available for park and ride purposes. That will meet the projected demand for 2020 in the 169 corridor. So you can see what the current usage is of the roughly 1,066 spaces that we have right now. Again, a little bit more of a split between the park and rides that are utilized. You'll see a lot of the park and ride usage from Savage is understandably at the Burnsville Transit Station. In our case, in Shakopee, the vast majority use South Bridge currently, although both Prior Lake and Shakopee have a substantial number of folks who still travel to the Burnsville Transit Station. And what we hear from those riders is that it really still is a level of service issue for them. When they go to Burnsville, or for those that go to Southwest, they know that the buses are going to come about every five minutes or so. So it doesn't matter so much when they get there.
Michael, I have a question. On those two slides, I don't understand what they are. Is it just like people, cars per day, or what is, what do they slide?
It is the number of spaces occupied at the park and ride.
Just on any given day?
Pardon?
No, just on a single day where it was checked, or what is the average?
I believe, Jane, that's the average for the year, isn't it? 2010, 2011? Yes.
License plates?
License plates. So on a particular day when the survey was done then?
Thank you.
Ridership comparison between the Met Council, Metro Transit, and suburban providers. On the met transit side, of course, local bus still constitutes the largest portion at 74%, but 12% now consists of light rail service, express bus, about 11%, a small percentage in commuter rail, and some dial-a-ride service. While on the suburban transit provider side, the vast majority of service provided by MBTA, Southwest, ourselves, Plymouth, and Maple Grove is in the form of express, but a number of those providers, as well as Shakopee, provide some local bus service, and in at least one case, provide some dial-a-ride service under contract to a private provider. In terms of revenues, you can see the sources of funding for transit operations in the metro area transit budget. The vast majority of funds come from MVEST at 206.1 or 45%. The state general fund has provided about 11% or about $52 million. And as you probably know with the bills that have been introduced, part of what's being talked about is reducing or eliminating that general fund contribution to transit in the region and backfilling it with a portion of the new revenues from the sales taxes that are being talked about. The fare recovery rate generally within the region is somewhere around 20 to 30%. So you see about 24% of revenue is coming from fares, some local, and some expenditures from reserves. And again, on the right, you see the expenditures. Metro Transit at 62%, Hiawatha Light Rail at 8% or $37.1 million. Metro Mobility is a very substantial and costly service at $53.4 million. And again, Metro Mobility is in those communities, served by Metro Mobility. We do have ADA service here. It is provided by our county provider. In terms of our current service, primarily the express, right now, we provide 10 a.m. trips from Eagle Creek and South Bridge, 10 p.m. trips. We instituted, as you know, a reverse commute service that actually utilizes the Cedar Grove Station for part of its run. That's part of MBTA, and we have one midday trip. There is Smart Lake Transit. I've mentioned that. That is the name for Scott County Transit. They provide the medical assistance, the ADA, and the basic dial-a-ride services. They also contract with us for those roughly 35,000 riders that are on the Shakopee Circulator. And of course, Minnesota Valley Transit, they have three routes that serve Savage Park and Rides, the 464, the 444, and the 421. Terms of future service needs, there certainly is, based not only on our planning, but also by some of the planning that was done by Southwest Transit, going to be additional demand for commuter service in the 169 corridor. That's one of the most underserved corridors right now in the south and west metro area. You've heard about, read about the Southwest Light Rail Transit Line, projected to open somewhere around 2017 to 2018. Right now, the planning does not include a stop on 169. The question for us in Scott County and in Shakopee is, how do our residents, how do our taxpayers get the benefit of being able to utilize that transit investment? How do we get those folks there? There will be an increased demand for dial-a-ride type services, due in part to population growth, but also in part on the change in composition of that population. Elderly and transit-dependent populations, some of whom right now may qualify for ADA service, but actually, because of convenience, may use the dial-a-ride service instead. At TPT and TRB, we've talked about whether or not there is an ability to design a circulator service, a timed, regular route service that serves more of northern Scott County. I know Ms. Kansier and I both get a number of calls from folks saying, "I want to get from Shakopee to the clinic up on 42 in Savage." Don't have a way for them to do that. Or someone from Prior Lake who wants to get to the South Valley Medical Campus, really don't have a way to do that. It's difficult. If you recall, our circulator service contains two loops. Each of those loops is a trip of about 45 minutes to an hour. So when you start factoring in, going into certain destinations in Prior Lake and Savage, the challenge is, how can you keep the rides manageable for the population? Moving on. For future service expansion, and I think this is covered in the Transit Operations and Management Plan, we talked about expanding the number of trips by one from South Bridge in 2013 and 2014, having four trips per day from Eagle Creek in those two years, expanding to 12 trips per day in '15 and '16, five trips in Eagle Creek. And then, as you can see for Marshall Road, we talked about beginning express service from that site, excuse me, in 2014 and growing it. Now, some of that growth is dependent on those CMAC, or Combined Mitigation Air Quality Grants, that I mentioned before. In 2009, the city of Prior Lake, on our behalf, was awarded a CMAC grant largely to acquire three buses for the expansion. We also have another pending CMAC grant for another three buses. It is 2013. We don't have those first three buses yet, although Ms. Kansier is now in the process of securing those. But the process of securing them can be anywhere from six months to about a year and a half in our experience. Some of that is dependent on when we can acquire those buses and put them into service. There is, for those grants, a small match for, I think it's the first three years, isn't it, for operations? After those first three years, we then become responsible for the full operational cost of each of those buses. So the impact of that proposed service expansion, which is a relatively modest expansion, is that we will have increased capital costs. There are capital costs for maintenance of each of the park and rides. We have two online now. When we have Marshall Road Transit Station online, the portion that's attributable to transit usage, especially express transit usage, largely that 400-space parking lot and the waiting area that will be indoors, will be costs that will have to build into our budgets for those facilities. There are the additional operational costs of those buses. There are some things which are covered by Met Council, if you have a major engine failure, for example. However, in these diesel MCI coaches, if you have a turbocharger unit that goes, it's the responsibility of the transit provider. We've happened to have three that had to be replaced in the last year roughly, to the tune of about $8,000. In addition, we had another expense, I forget which component it was, that was on the same order of magnitude. Those are buses that are at most five years old. So we can expect that we'll have additional maintenance costs related to that as well. Our plan, that you have a copy of, looked at two basic scenarios, and to summarize, it roughly says, somewhere between 2016 and 2018, Prior Lake and Shakopee will have spent down their reserves. So we will not have reserves to use for operational costs. And to give you an order of magnitude of where we are now for MVEST that we're taking in here in Shakopee and our expenses for transit, we have about a $1.2 million transit budget currently. We receive about $670,000 in MVEST to operate that service. So once those fund balances are gone, and we've been drawing them down for a number of years, we won't have them to rely on unless there's a change in funding. Now, if one of the measures passes this year, hopefully, we'll be at the table and ensure that operational costs are there for the services that our residents have been expecting. Smart Link 2 is looking for 120% funding increase by 2017 to continue operating their services. In terms of the operations and capital funding, the question will become at some point, depending on what direction we go, what do we do in terms of service? In Shakopee here, for example, some of you have been around for a while. Remember that in 1984, when Shakopee opted out, one of its core services was to support some van pools. Couple of years ago, we had to make the decision to do away with the van pools. We had very few riders. I think we had a total of 20 riders, per se, on about three buses, and the per-passenger subsidy was quite high. So we discontinued that service. If no other changes occur here in Shakopee, we have another option available, and that is, we could make a choice between express service and circulator service. Obviously, the circulator service carries fewer riders. I think our annual ridership allocation on Blue Express is around 90,000 to 92,000. As I said, we have about 35,000 on the circulator service. Increases in revenues, and that, of course, is one of the hot topics at the legislature. Should there be a different management structure? Right now, we have a number of memoranda of understanding and joint powers agreements related to those park and rides and the operation of the Blue Express. Is that something that should become much more broad and concrete? Should Scott County and frankly, Carver County, join the Scott, or the County Transit Improvement Board, the CTIB? And here in Shakopee, by a vote of four to one, of course, you expressed your support for the general governor's proposal of a quarter cent sales tax increase for additional funding for transit. Little bit about CTIB. For those who have not been bored enough by me yet, of course, it was authorized by the legislature in 2008. All seven metropolitan counties were allowed to join it, but it was at their choice. Carver and Scott were the only two that did not join, although the county has been represented at CTIB discussions, and maybe Leslie or Lisa can talk more about that if there are questions. The purpose was to fund the planning, design, building, and operation of the region's approved transitway system, and those counties, by joining CTIB, imposed on themselves a quarter percent sales tax, imposed on themselves and their visitors and their residents. Their vision is stated as a network of interconnected transitways that allows users to move efficiently, safely, while mitigating congestion, enhancing economic development, and improving environmental stability for the region. I don't know how many of us planners could have written that thing over the last 20 years, but it's pretty generic. The key, I think, is to look at that five-county map, and you can see what their vision is in terms of the capital investments and ultimately, the operational expenses for rapid transit, either in the form of light rail, commuter rail, or bus rapid transit. Again, it's raised about $250 million a year for those purposes. It has, the governor's proposal goes further, and again, talks about a quarter percent, a quarter cent sales tax in the entire seven-county metro area dedicated for transit. I think our assumption at this point is that that quarter cent would not be voluntary. One of the questions is, does that automatically place Carver and Scott County in CTIB? And what about that first quarter cent that each of the other five counties participate in so far? The estimates that I've seen for funding to be generated by the proposal have ranged from about 200 to 300 million, depending on some of the assumptions in those projections. It is expected to eliminate current transit operational funding deficits, to fully fund Southwest LRT, which is the next LRT online. It is supposed to allow for a 1% expansion of the regional bus system and fund new bus and rail transitways over the next 20 years. That, you might want to note, includes streetcars, which have become very popular in a couple of our regional communities. And this is the map that was unveiled in connection with the governor's proposal. And in all of my time in the region, this is the first time that we've appeared on a map that talks about transit ways. In fact, in my first years here, back in the mid-'90s, I spent much of my time, it seemed, at the Met Council saying, "Why is it you've got a five-county transit planning map and not a seven-county transit planning map?" So, side by side, that's the difference in the vision reflected in those two maps. Governance is another important component, and I've touched on that already. At the TPT and the TRB, we've already done some brainstorming about what the options are. And those were laid out by Ms. Kansier for her city council last Monday. One is to continue operating because of the demand level and the amount of funding, pretty much as we are now, as largely a two-city joint powers agreement with the participation and cooperation of Scott County. And I should note, for those who are not aware of it, and I know you all are, that South Bridge is actually owned by the county. Eagle Creek is actually leased by the county from the Shakopee, Medowon, and Ten-Sue. And as I mentioned, Marshall Road is partially owned by the county, partially by MinDOT. I think the important thing to note is, none of those facilities are facilities that Prior Lake and Shakopee own. We participate in the operation and maintenance of them, but the county has stepped up and played that role. We've talked about whether or not there's a county model. Should the transit services that we provide be folded into all of the transit that I've mentioned that has been provided by Smart Link? A south-of-the-river model. In years past, I spoke with Beverly Miller at Minnesota Valley Transit, and I also spoke with Lynn Simmich at Southwest about whether there were opportunities to join together with either of them. Is that something that we look, again, at more closely? The 169 corridor model really relates more to that Southwest Transit discussion. Right now, our express commuter corridor is largely 169. For the future, that's certainly a corridor that Southwest Transit is very interested in, because a lot of their current commuter service is presumably going to be supplanted by the light rail line that's being developed. County-wide joint powers model, Minnetonka model, or even Maple Grove, as I mentioned, both Minnetonka and Maple Grove are opt-out transit providers. Minnetonka actually came later. Both of them contract with Metro Transit for the bus service that they have. Except, in the case of Maple Grove, they have a small dial-a-ride service, and that I know they procured from a private provider. And then, a suburban transit provider model. During the last legislative session, those of us who are staffed to the suburban transit providers and work through STA's providers and work through STA, Suburban Transit Association, came up with a sort of generic model that we started talking about informally, that talked about Metro Council, Metro Transit, really focusing in on that area where they do best with transit, and that is the larger bus service and the rail and bus rapid transit services within the 494, 694 Beltway. And especially if the legislature were to expand the ability of other communities to become opt-out transit providers or to seek service, then maybe a suburban transit provider model to deal with, if you will, the outer ring of the seven county region. Again, Metro Council is responsible for transit within the seven county area. We are among a handful of providers that opted out after 1982, I believe it was, when the legislature provided that option, and later on, when Minnetonka had the window opened for them. There are 13 communities in all that have opted out, but the Met Council still controls the flow of funds to those opt-out transit providers. So, for example, on the capital side, we operate buses, and several years ago, the Met Council said, we want to own all the buses. We actually used to have the titles here at City Hall. They now have title to all the buses, and we have a lease agreement for those that we use. On the operational side, the funds come from the state to the Met Council, and per the formula that's been established under their revenue allocation policy, we receive a portion of it. The caveat, of course, is that for two years, there were cuts to our M vest funding in Plymouth, Prior Lake, Shakopee, and Maple Grove. In fact, Maple Grove had no M vest funding for a couple of years, because the Met Council deemed them to have too many transit fund balance dollars. I've already talked about the Transit Review Board and what some of the issues are there. In some of the things that I've talked about already, the question is, are there some opportunities for efficiencies in what we do that can help offset some of the shortfalls that we contemplate may occur between 2016 and 2018? To offset that, what are the issues related to loss of local control and influence? And all apologies to our partners in Prior Lake, we went through a long period just in getting the Blue Express service launched, where there were difficulties in our respective organizations letting go enough of our identities and our ties to those services to partner together. We got there, but the question is, how much local control do you want to have? On the other side, thinking strategically, I grew up Democratic in North Minneapolis, strategy's always good. Do larger transit groups, larger transit providers, have a better chance of impacting the Met Council and the way it handles funds that are available for transit services outside of Metro Transits? And key, if we were to provide for consolidation, is how do we ensure that, I would say, not only current levels of service are supported, but those that we contemplate as reasonable expansions to continue meeting up, pent-up demand can be put in place? What is the best option? I'm certainly not here telling you what the best option is. These are just a couple of the options that are available. As I said, one option may be to say, oh, hang it, let's just contract with Metro Transit. They provide service to other folks. That's an alternative as well. So, the policy issues for discussion, and hopefully direction from you, is in our case, you've already gone on record by vote of a majority of the council, supporting that quarter cent sales tax. The real question there is, how does that money get allocated? And if we have a seat at the table in the development of that legislation, then hopefully there's an opportunity to, in effect, how that's allocated, and some of that money will continue to come to Scott County, to Shakopee, to Prior Lake. There is the regional governance issue. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. We'll leave that to others who are more interested in that issue than I am. And there has been floating out there a question of whether or not the TAB, the Transit Advisory Board, should be further restructured, based on the role of the Metro Council as the Metropolitan Planning Organization. I should mention that we have the pleasure of having had Jane Kansir become a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee just recently. So, we have a voice there on that committee at the Metropolitan Council, and I think that's very helpful. One of the questions that may become at issue in the legislative session is, what's the support for becoming a part of C Tib? And how does that affect the distribution of funds as opposed to, one of the bills currently that was introduced embodying the governor's proposal, which really says every month, the Met Council gets the money, and then they decide where it's going to go. My paraphrasing, but that's essentially what the language says. Questions, discussion, direction, questions for either of the August persons we have with us from Prior Lake or from the county, if I've missed something? Anything I missed that either of you want to touch on?
Before we get too far into discussion things, Leslie and Jane, do you have anything you want to say with regard to what's been said already? Anything to add? Okay. Councilman Lehman.
Host of questions and thoughts. First would be, if we have the largest increase in ridership, why are we going broke?
If I can refer to what I shared with you previously, we have a transit operating budget of about $1.2 million. We have operating funds of about $670,000 coming in every year, which means that fund balance we have, we are spending to maintain our operations every year. And roughly by 2016, 2017, we will have spent through those, unless there's a change in the funding through the legislature. Those scenarios we looked at suggest there wouldn't be a substantial increase in M vest funding.
So, the operational funding that you received is inadequate?
Exactly.
Okay, that's the answer I was looking for, just a roundabout way of asking it. Metro Transit out of Burnsville goes to the east. They serve...
MBTA out of Burnsville actually serves Minneapolis, St. Paul, I believe, the University of Minnesota as well, as the Mall of America with their services.
And Southwest in Eden Prairie...
Southwest primarily serves Minneapolis, and to a lesser extent, has served the 169 corridor. They have been exploring options for serving more of the 169 corridor ridership. In fact, when we submitted the last grant for CMAC funds, they had submitted an application that scored just below ours for a park and ride to be constructed on the 169 corridor that they would serve.
My concern is that the dollars that they get out of the governor's proposal, we're not going to see it back here. That's my concern. If it's consistent with past practices...
Sure. And I think that everyone at each of the opt-out transit providers, whether it's MBTA, the largest, or us here, have the same concern, and that's why, to the extent we have been able to, we've tried to be at the table with those legislators. A little harder to look people in the face when they've been helping you out with legislation and saying, none of it's going to come to you, we're just going to hand it to the Met Council, and they can do with it what they will. That is a real concern, because we've been, all of us, MBTA, Southwest, ourselves, Maple Grove, Plymouth, burned by that before.
What would happen if we turned the whole thing over, back over to the Met Council and said, you guys operate it?
Well, at the risk of being flipped, I think I'd be sending a lot of calls their way from folks who are not happy with the level of service they've gotten. Because Met Council, if I'm being fair, and Jane, please set me straight if I'm not, Met Council has its own budgetary issues providing its bus service. It has had to make some reductions in some of the service it provides. When it does that, it looks at what are the, from their perspective, least productive routes. Now, remember, that vast majority of bus routes that produce ridership are theirs, and they are largely in the core cities in that first ring around the core cities. So, if it comes to a crunch between funding bus rapid transit corridors, light rail corridors, which they're responsible for, commuter rail, and some of the outlier services, my concern would be that they may look at some of those outlier services and say, they're not really productive enough, and we should just cut them. They have often made the case that, and you can believe the counting by them if you want, I frankly don't, that their express routes have a much lower subsidy per passenger. Of course, their express routes, by and large, travel a much shorter distance than ours do. So, I'm not sure that's a fair measure. But if you were to take a look at just those numbers, would be relatively easy for them to look at some of the suburban routes, not just ours, and say, if we've got to cut somewhere, maybe that's where we cut. And we focus on the rail, we focus on the bus rapid transit, and we focus on those highly productive bus lines that we have in the core of the metro area.
So, with the BRT that we've got proposed up and down 169 in the newer maps, who would run that, then? Would that be run by Metro Transit? Or would that replace, if Blue Express were still going, would that replace Blue Express and just take over those routes that we've got there? How does that?
I don't know that there's a specific decision about that, but I think there are a couple of things that are instructive. The Met Council, of course, does a regional comprehensive plan, if you will. Part of that is the transportation policy plan. Basically, as I recall, the last one, and they're in the process of reviewing and revising it, it says that bus rapid transit, light rail transit, commuter rail is basically going to be operated by Met Transit. So, there may be some momentum to say, if it's one of those things, Met Council should do that. However, I don't think there's anything that mandates that they would provide that service. Anything that I, any more than I think there's anything that currently mandates that they would provide some of the service. Southwest Transit could have been the provider of service along the Southwest Light Rail Transit Line. That's not the way it's going to go, but I don't think there's anything that would have prohibited that from occurring, just on a general basis. And of course, MBTA is responsible for operating a bus rapid transit line on Cedar Avenue, while Metro Council is ultimately responsible for 35.
Okay.
Last question, Mayor.
Yeah.
The consolidation option, is it possible to consolidate with both the other large providers, with the largest of the other two providers?
That's a good question. As I said last session, all of us as providers, or representatives of providers, talked about that. And in fact, just for the folks who are listening, back in 2005, when we did a unified transit management plan for Scott County, it actually said, not these exact words, but what you're proposing to do now is a good first step. We don't think that's where it ends. Ultimately, we think there has to be a larger, more effective organization to provide service. It may be that through discussions, there are opportunities to consolidate with MBTA for certain kinds of service. I mean, they may look at the western part of Shakopee and frankly Prior Lake and say, eh, it's kind of outside our core area, we really don't have the resources to provide everything you want. But especially as Southwest Light Rail comes online, there may be an opportunity, and the executive director or CEO of Southwest taught me to talk about this yesterday, to say, what if we partner with you to provide service to that Southwest Light Rail corridor line, which we're not going to be able to with the buses that we have? So, I think there may be options. I think the sense of what Prior Lake's council did was to say, open up discussions with both of them, see where that takes you. And I will share my personal opinion, which is just that in having those discussions, I think it's important for our three jurisdictions, the county, Prior Lake, and Shakopee, to number one, assure that the current service levels we've built since 2000 level can be maintained, expanded at a reasonable rate, and that there's a structure, if we were to join with either or both of them, that assures that there's a good local voice from Scott County and our communities for making decisions about what that service would continue to look like. Yes?
Does he have a recovery map that shows the express as the highest recovery?
Leslie was just providing, let me just go back here.
This gets at one of your questions, Councilmember Lehman.
So, this table shows you the relative fare recovery rates, and the top bar is urban local, about 26.6%, suburban local, that's what we operate through our circulator service, about 17.1% fare recovery rate. Express, 43.9%. In other words, the highest recovery ratio for fares. LRT is also pretty good, at 40.5%. Commuter rail, eh, not so good. And as you might expect, given the nature of the service, ADA and dial-a-ride service are very costly, and we don't recover that much in fares for those. But those are services that are in part mandated by federal law. As I said, the trigger for us was the circulator service that we substituted for our dial-a-ride service before. So, that gives you some idea of how we perform in the region on fare recovery across the different kinds of services. Thank you, Leslie.
Councilwoman White.
Well, I think the main concern is to have that voice at the table, and be able to try and influence to keep what we have and maintain what we have. Now, as in the pie, I think we were 4% with bringing Prior Lake into it. I think that kind of negotiating power isn't quite as there is, joining up with one of these other groups and becoming, maybe both these groups, but at least start the negotiations, I think, is key, to see what package we can get and maintain assurances that we are going to have that voice and be able to speak our mind and what kind of goals and objectives we want. Now, the C Tib part, I think, are we going to be, is that going to kind of come upon us, at least that other quarter percent? Leslie?
Mayor, Mr. Councilmember, the quarter percent, I think people think is going to be mandated, it's a matter of, like Mr. Leek said, how do we negotiate at the table for the opt-outs and making sure there's a provision in there for that service? The board, just so we go back through C Tib, when they were faced with this decision in 2008, it was a vote-in option, not vote-out. It was a vote-in, and it had to be by a majority of the board. All seven metro counties were allowed the ability to do this, to levy the quarter cent within their community. There was a provision, if you were a minimum county, so if you were under 3%, the quarter percent generates about $100 million roughly for the seven counties, based on what the estimates were at that time, on what we taxed at that time. So, you see, the numbers are a little different now, if the sales tax, what was taxed was to change, and if it was the governor's plan, so it's a little bit different, but it was about $100 million. Scott County was projected at about 3.05%. So, we were just over the threshold. If we'd been under all 3 million of that, or let's say 2.9 million or whatever, if the board had opted in at the time, would have come back for transit operations within our community. So, for Blue Express, for MBTA, you could have done Smart Link, you could have had, used it for the transit stations that we have constructed and built. But since we were over that, there was no guarantee the funds would come back. The other issue we were facing is, 169 was not recognized as a transitway. So, 35 definitely was, and that, if you talk to Elko, Newmarket, and to Savage, and even Prior Lake, if you noticed, had as many riders go to the Burnsville and the Lakeville stations as utilize our Shakopee station. So, 35 is very important to the residents in our community. But 169 was not recognized as a transitway within the C Tib map, if you were to go back to that map. So, there would have been no way even to have invested through what they were doing into a corridor that was impacting 169. So there would have been no way even to have invested through what they were doing into a corridor that was impacting one sixty-nine. And so the board at that time made the decision, there was no payback to our community to levy ourselves at a quarter cent. Now, the map has changed and the governor's discussion is there, and would it be a quarter, would it be a half? No one knows, as Michael said. Um, and so the board is waiting with as fluid as this bill has been, and there's three or four different bills in there now that they're talking about, before they weigh in on anything to do with this bill and try to understand what the impacts are to the county.
Councilwoman Clay.
This bill you were just talking about is in addition to the C Tib quarter percent?
Councilmember Clay, the governor's quarter cent is above the quarter cent that the C Tib communities have already levied. So if you were in Dakota or Hanipin and this were to go through, it would be a half cent in those communities. The way it is, we believe it would be a quarter cent in Scott and Carver. I, I haven't seen a discussion yet that says we're automatically in for the half cent, half percent, excuse me.
If we, Scott County were to decide to join the, the, in with the C Tib, if that extra quarter percent, and then a year or two later change their minds, do they have the option of backing out of that again? Or are they committed to it for a certain number of years?
Mr. Mayor, um, Councilmember Clay, um, you would be obligated if C Tib did any bonding during that time to pay off your share of the life of that bond or the costs associated with the bond. So if right now C Tib had bonded money, let's say for, um, the central corridor, and Washington County or Ramsey County wanted to back out, they would still be committed to pay their share of that bond through the life of the bond through that tax. They wouldn't be on the hook for any future bonds or things like that. But yes, there is a way out, but you would be committed if they had bonded during that time.
Could you explain what happened with, uh, Washington County, who wasn't in originally and then decided after the fact to get in? Is that the way it worked?
Mr. Mayor, no, Washington County, um, this goes back to, uh, the mid-two thousands, and it was really the regional rail authorities of the seven counties that met and were trying to find a way to promote transit within the metro area and take some leadership in how to get this done. Um, Hiawatha had come on the line, um, through Governor Ventura and had been completed. And so the Metro Transitways Board evolved from the regional rail authorities. That was the seven counties. We were an active member in the regional rail authority and the Metro Transitways Board. Um, when they formed or became C Tib, they disbanded as that and then became a joint powers agreement. Washington was always in and was one of the original members of C Tib. Um, but they had a different issue also. They, they were paying in somewhere, let's say in the seven percentile range, I'm not sure of the exact number, but they didn't have an active service line like Hiawatha or Cedar or thirty-five in the near future for them. And so they had just had, um, some issues with the thirty-five W bridge collapse. They were running bus service up into Forest Lake and serving those areas to help with transit. The commitment was to fund them sixty percent of what they were paying in to continue to fund some of their bus lines within their community. And that has been the ongoing agreement that C Tib has had with Washington County.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this general thing? Councilwoman Lehman.
It seems to me that if, if we turned it all back over to the Met Council, they would, they would take the buses, some of the buses, use them somewhere in the inner city, cut their capital outlay, cut some of our services, fix some of their funding problems. If we don't do that, they'll cut some of our funding, force us to find our own revenue service, our, our own revenue source, or cut our operational funding, forcing us to cut some of our services. So really, working with this partner isn't really a, a partner that I want to dance with because they're all over my feet all the time. So I'm kind of leery to, uh, to try to partner with a partner that hasn't been a very good dancing partner in the past.
I didn't know you could dance.
What are you, what are you talking about partnering on?
Well, they control our funding, so we're a partner whether we like it or not.
Okay. How is it working for Minnetonka, Maple Grove, um, Lakeville? Is Lakeville also Metro Transit? No, they have a goofy deal there.
Lakeville ha- has, where the Met Council, I think, had some leverage to bring them into the transit taxing district. Um, we preserved the way stations way back in nineteen ninety-one for future transit when the forty-six interchange went in. And that was always part of it was that they would eventually come in and that's where their provider, but it did skip over the MVTA. Um, the county board's position on this has been that we would hope we could have discussions with the MVTA. Um, we are a member of the MVTA, Scott County is, obviously with our role with Savage, and feel strongly that the commonality is the south of the river. We have the river crossing issue we all struggle with. Those communities have that same issue that we have. And so trying to partner, we have the thirty-five W bridge replacement facing us coming up here in two thousand and twenty. Um, one sixty-nine is going to have to carry, we're going to have to have transit on thirty-five to help make some of that work. And so, um, the direction has really been to sit down and have the mayor or the administrator have a discussion with the chair of the MVTA and their administrator and talk about being part of that joint powers. Again, getting to, um, the councilmember Lehman about they have common issues. We're dealing with other local elected officials who have tended to be a better partner. Um, the board's discussions have been that the dollars, if the governor, I think very wisely, he's created a lot of discussion on this, didn't say it was going to Met Council, didn't say it was going to C Tib, but that we needed a stable source of funding for transit, and we very clearly do, as you can watch the ups and downs. Part of the whole discussion on our funding is they want you to run down your fund balance before we're eligible to compete for any more MVESTs. They don't want you sitting there holding that large fund balance. And so that's part of the discussion. But it's, it's been their preference that we would have the discussion with C Tib, and then the opt-outs could negotiate with other elected officials, which is what C Tib is if the quarter cent were to go through. Um, I think showing some of your comments towards, um, our partnership with the Metropolitan Council.
Michael, did you have something to say?
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
Just came up in case you had questions related to that.
Councilwoman Clay.
Long as you're all right there. Between Leslie and, and you and, and Jane, do you have a, um, can, is there a consensus among you as to what would be the best way to proceed here?
I'll, I'll speak for myself and the others can speak for myself.
So the answer is no, there's not a consensus?
I, I don't have a strong preference one way or the other. I do share Councilor Lehman's concerns about trying to do something with the Met Council for a variety of reasons. So I would not suggest that we look in that direction. Um, I think there is merit in having discussions both with Southwest and MVTA because we are talking about MVTA, which has a largely somewhat more east-south of the river orientation for the core of its services. And we have a corridor in one sixty-nine that is a little bit distant, and I know that's a concern for Pryor Lake as well. So I think it's important to have those discussions. I think we informally as, um, implementers of suburban transit at Suburban Transit Association sort of acknowledge that in what we were brainstorming about for suburban areas. And one of the things we were looking at was what if one of the legislators is successful and they open the rest of the seven county region and say other cities can be opt-outs? Because they like what Southwest or MVTA or even we have, and they haven't had the option for that kind of service. How do we partner with them? Well, the first concern is, is there enough funding? Presumably, the governor's proposal or some version of it addresses that issue for the region for the long term. But then the question is, how do you organize for it? And I don't think you organize for it in twenty or thirty separate transit providers for the long term.
I think Councilmember Clay too, the, the big issue here is even currently, we're dealing with MVEST dollars that you get back. It, it's not property tax dollars like the discussion was in two thousand and two. Um, people in, in Blue Earth County and Rice County and Good Hugh County are contributing to this also. And so I really think we need to be looking at regional express service. You see it as a fairly high recovery rate. Its popularity is growing. And so where are the right locations for this? And like Michael says, it's, it's not going to be in every community. And so what are the right places? What's the right expectation for distance for people to drive to access them? And then how as the suburban ring do we operate that? It might be that Chaska and Chanhason should be having this discussion with us on all being a south pro- express provider and how we would work together also. The other thing is, I think the Met Council, um, on one sixty-nine has really come to realize the importance also though of that corridor. And, um, Lisa is involved in a study that right now is looking at the transitways. And there is definitely interest in the one sixty-nine corridor. You had Hanipin County join the one sixty-nine coalition. A big reason of that was transit. What is it, forty-four percent of the state's jobs are in a ten-mile span off of that highway between ninety-four and Mankato. So you start to think about the stops that could be along that corridor and the growth they could have in some type of highway BRT with the right connections and the laterals off of it. One sixty-nine is probably a very promising corridor for their transit. It's just been understudied, I think, in the past, and part of that is the engagement on the western side of the communities. But I, I think the Met Council realizes one sixty-nine is important. They're putting in an effort to evaluate that. And I think that is a very positive sign, um, for the regional transit plan moving forward.
Thank you all for asking, for inviting me. Um, as the short answer to your question is obviously no. There's not a consensus amongst us. I can give you, um, my professional planning ideas. I can tell you my pers- how this personally impacts me. But I think what we all agree on is that, um, there's probably a better way to do transit than we currently are doing it in our communities. But our, our biggest concern is that we maintain and continue the service that we've worked really hard to establish and grow. And, um, the Pryor Lake City Council, at any rate, their direction to me was to look at all those options. And at the end of the day, that should be the, the priority, continue and maintain that service.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, Jane. Councilwoman Lehman.
I don't, I disagree with just maintaining, and I've said this for five years now, I think, probably longer. We can't now, or don't now, make the connections needed to make our system so much better at, at a cost-sharing expense. Meaning if we, if we had the ability to take our service and get onto Southwest Needham Prairie or Burnsville Station, the, the thing just expands from there because now you can get on another bus at either one of these places that go somewhere that yours don't. And now you've opened up the whole region to the Southwest area. So that's key in any future of this whole process. So, you know, it's not really a capital expansion, it's a, it's a.
Service expansion.
It's a service expans- expansion through cooperative agreements or, or just common sense, I guess it would be, but.
Councilmember Lehman, I, I, I think we all would agree with you that the connection to the Southwest Transit Line, that was one of the board's comments back on the EIS, was we need to be thinking about an online station. Those major hubs, United Health, General Mills, all of those to the north and the cross-connections that they have would be important and encourage ridership, I think, from our community as well as American Boulevard. I mean, four ninety-four strip carries as many jobs as, you know, the downtowns do. But it's very difficult to access and very expensive from a transit standpoint. But those connections and having that system in play are what will open it up and will grow the ridership.
But no pun intended, that's a two-way street because they now gain riders on their skeleton buses, which helps their, uh, funding issues because a lot of their, their buses up there are running, you know, with very few passengers on very short distance runs.
Who's there you're talking about?
Well, it'd be the four ninety-four strip or, or, uh, American Avenue, them types of buses, where they're picking up the same people every day, taking them to the same location, and they're not full like an express route. Okay? Well, if, if I wanted to go to Mall America or something and I was able to connect to their, that area and jump on that bus to get me over there, they now gained a rider that they normally wouldn't have, which also helps them. So this is a two-way.
It's a win-win.
It is. It really is. Make, just making connections. I would like to see us talk to both of the others, Southwest and MVTA. That's what I'd like to see happen. And just get a feeling and see where it goes and, and then get a report back. That's my personal feeling. Because I think we'll get the connections that way too.
So let's back this up just a minute. Um, first off, we are currently with Blue Express. Um, is there consensus among council that that is, we need to, at a very minimum, maintain the, um, uh, services that we provide now with every intent of increasing that, but maintain those services but not with Blue Express by joining with someone else if opportunities come up. We want to explore that. Is there consensus within council that we want to move in that direction? Councilwoman Whiting.
I think the main thing is that the, the service doesn't get interrupted. Whether it's, you know, that Blue Express bus or it's whoever's bus it is, I think that's the main thing. And that's the partnerships and, and the negotiation that Councilman Lehman, uh, was talking about, making those connections and, you know, increasing the ability to ridership. Now, we have built up a good program here and it's expanding and, uh, we've done some great things, especially with all the park and rides and things. You guys have done great work on that. And that's our bargaining chip. I think that by having built that up and joining and partnering with one of those groups or both of those groups, we can kind of force back on the Met Council saying, hey, we are a bigger player now. Now we want to negotiate. We want to, you know, take care of us. So I think the negotiation part with both of them, I think, is important, but, uh.
Councilwoman Clay.
I'm curious, does working closer, closely with Southwest and MVTA necessarily cause us to risk having to reduce the current service we have?
I guess my answer, members of the council, to that would be not if you negotiate well. The crux of that discussion and that negotiation, as I suggested earlier, should be, we've done some pretty substantial planning for what the transit expansion needs are for our county and our communities. If we partner with you, Southwest and MVTA, we really think that you need to buy into our planning to serve those needs. And whatever, um, agreement we end up at to become a part of a consolidated service reflects that. I think that's really a matter of strategic negotiation. I don't think you can answer it today, but I think you need to have it in mind as you move forward. Uh, what I would not want to see is a situation where you agreed to join one organization or another without having that strong negotiation and finding somewhere down the road that you're just sending your population further down the congestion corridor because that's where someone else is operating. I think we've demonstrated pretty substantially since July of two thousand and seven that we're at the right location geographically to pick off those riders. If I recall the annual numbers between the two of us, we've gone from in Shakopee having about thirty thousand riders to on Blue Express alone having about a hundred and ninety thousand a year. That suggests to me that it's the right place, that it's grown nine percent over the previous year suggests it's the right place. Not sure it would be the right place if a different park and ride were established by another provider further to the north and our riders were forced to go there because, you know, our partner couldn't maintain the park and rides we've developed. But those are the kinds of things that I think you have to negotiate strongly, and I don't think you can answer them today without doing that.
Councilwoman Lehman.
Mr. Leek, I, I'm not sure, I'm not willing at this point to go so far as to say that I'm not willing to give up something that we currently have. The reason I say that is because, let's say we, we lose one of our, our morning and afternoon trips on our express route. But what we might gain from that might be better in our long-term planning for what we're trying to accomplish for the whole regional area of the Southwest area. So I, you know, I think, I wouldn't be too, too quick to say that we're, I'm not willing to give something up. So I, you know, I think, I wouldn't be too, too quick to say that we're, I'm not willing to give something up because I don't know what I'm receiving in, in return.
And, and Councilor Lehman, members of the council, I'm not suggesting that you take a posture that says nothing's on the table. I learned long ago in law school in my mediation class that the, the best negotiations are those where everyone is a little dissatisfied. That means probably no one gets exactly what they'd like out of the negotiation for that change. You're right, you could end up with a situation where reducing the number of trips from one park and ri- ride location is worth the overall increase in ridership from Shakopee, from Scott County. You know, that's something that you have to test as you go along.
Councilman Clay?
If I understand correctly, Prior Lake City Council is suggesting that we'll, or they directed you to look at our internal discussions or negotiations with Southwest and MVTA. If we were to do the same thing, recognizing the importance of, um of the concerns of, of Ms. Kansir, that the services that we currently provide remain and, you know, negotiate strongly or forcefully to achieve that. If, if we were then to, this body to basically agree with and join in with Prior Lake in that decision, what would those, the next steps look like? How would we go about doing that with two separate organizations?
Well, Jane can correct me if I'm wrong. We've talked about that very briefly after her workshop. And I think frankly, one of our first steps would be to communicate with the executive directors for both organizations and invite them perhaps to our Transit Review Board to talk about what they currently provide, whether they see a potential for a partnership with the services that we've developed, what they see as potential concerns to address in those discussions, just to get that set of discussions with both started. At this point, we haven't at the TRB had the benefit of having those folks talk directly with them. And remember, I mentioned that we had some concern about keeping elected officials engaged through the TRB. We think that may be a way of keeping our elected officials interested and at the table. If we are talking directly with Beverly Miller or Len Simage or their deputies about what we might do. So I think that's about as far as we've gone with the next steps. And then I think we need to see what kinds of proposals each respective side can put together for what that would look like.
Councilman Clay?
That whole thing sounds like about a five-year process?
I don't sense that anyone's looking for a five-year process. I do think it will take some time, but I think I, I at least have the sense that your council is looking at something shorter term than that. A few months for us to at least scope out what the possibilities are and then to bring those back after we've sort of tested that through the TRB.
Because we've got, what, five years? Four or five years of, before we run out of operating revenue?
Well, it's two thousand and thirteen and if we're unlucky, it's about three years.
Okay. And then this is if the governor's quarter percent regional thing goes through that would buy us some more time.
Table that may have worked to our advantage.
Yeah. Providing we get some of that, it would give us some padding time wise, okay.
It sounds to me, from what I'm hearing from comments, that we have essentially the same consensus.
Not yet. Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes, I, I mean, I agree that we need to pursue these conversations. And I think talking to both entities makes a lot of sense. Just for the fact of what we just called out, that our operation, operational funding will soon expire. So to figure out how to sustain the operation over time and, and then gain that leverage through being part of a larger organization potentially. So it makes sense and I, I agree.
Did you want to add anything further to that?
All right. And I agree as well that we definitely need to open up and look at new ways of operating our services that we've got. I also think that with Southwest and MVTA, we would be shorting ourselves if we didn't at least look at Metro Transit at the same time. I think we need to bring that third option that is there, not that we ever have to take it, but talk to them and see what they could bring to the table for us. And we could negotiate with them in the exact same manner that we could negotiate with MVTA and Southwest and, and guarantee that our lines would be active for a certain period of time and, and those types of things. But at least have those conversations at the same time with them. Is that fair?
Let's see if we got, they have any turbochargers we could borrow.
If we could get a turbocharger or two stuck in there, yeah.
The, the only thing I'd say about that, Mayor, and members of the council, is that you'll recall we went out for bids for our express service. And we did send out the request for proposal to Metro Transit. They did not respond to that request for proposal. So that tends to suggest to Ms. Kansir and me, the level of interest probably is not very high. And I think that's understandable, given what's on their plate in terms of new arterial BRT, new LRT, trying to grow commuter service that's been a little bit of a poor stepchild. Told you so. So I, I think at this point, we can certainly, at some point, talk with them. But I'm not expecting that we'll get much based on the fact that we just went out last year and they didn't respond.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from council?
Do you want a consensus or would you like a motion?
I don't think a motion is required. If we have your consensus, that's adequate for us to move forward.
So the consensus is to pursue negotiations with Southwest and MVTA?
Yep.
And discuss with
In line with Prior Lake's directive?
And discuss with Metro Transit, everybody okay with that as well?
We can certainly do that.
I'm not crazy about the
I'm not either.
And it seems obvious that Prior Lake and the county will be included on all these discussions.
Our, our discussion between ourselves has been that we would try to utilize the transit planning team in the TRB, which both meet monthly, to keep those moving forward. And then report back to our respective boards.
Perfect.
Thank you for the consensus and for the time.
Okay. So is the consensus then to discuss with all three?
No.
Mostly the first two and if you got time and nothing else is going on, better.
Somebody put that in a motion.
Okay.
No, no, he didn't, we don't need a motion.
Mark, I'm not sure that we need that as a motion. If there are three of you that are shaking your heads that you want us to spend most of our time with Southwest and MVTA, but if we have time, we can certainly touch base with Metro Transit. That's sufficient for us to move forward.
I'm fully on board with that.
Okay. I concur.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number ten C one, update on County Road twenty-nine, Trunk Highway one sixty-nine inter- interchange project, consider a detour plan utilizing Fairling Drive.
Can we do that first?
This might take a little while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion for recess, five-minute recess?
We have a motion for five-minute recess by Councilman Lehman. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Somebody, Councilwoman Whiting? Any discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
I
Anyone opposed? Pass the AM. So we are in recess for five minutes. Thank you.
Did you have steam?
All right, do we have everybody we need?
It is.
I believe so.
All right, we're ready to go back on?
Let's take that and put it in the word.
All right, we reconvene the meeting at eight forty-five with, uh, item number ten C one. Update to County Road one sixty-nine, Trunk Highway one sixty-nine interchange project. Uh, Mr. Looney.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, we want to update you, this is another county project. And, um, we want to update you on the status of this project. We also want to show you a detour plan that affects the city of Shakopee. And, uh, then we also will touch base on this, finally, the scheduling and what's the next steps. And I'll touch on the bridge lights, uh, issue that we need to talk about and also where we're at with land acquisition. Mitch Rasmussen is here and Craig Jensen and Lisa Fries of Scott County. And I believe Mitch is going to take the presentation for first step.
Thank you, Mayor and council, good evening. Uh, this will be relatively short. Um, this is a project you're all probably pretty familiar with. Want to talk a little bit about the project's status and what's changed or what, uh, progress we made since the last time we came and talked to you. And then some of the current discussions. Uh, Engineer Looney talked about a, a detour plan. I want, before we talk about that, I want to give you some background on how we got to a detour plan. And then a little bit on scheduling as we move forward. So this is the staff approved layout. You've probably seen it before. Uh, you've got the ramp configurations, the, uh, loop and, uh, one sixty-nine, uh, kind of the east-west portion of that. This is some of the bridge amenities and the bridge design. Mindot's doing the bridge design and they are just finishing up with kind of the preliminary design and moving into final design. They're, the, the, uh, approach work is being done by, under contract with S R, S R F. And the county is holding that contract. That is also, we're a little farther than preliminary design on the approach work, probably, uh, at about the ninety percent plan, uh, completion point. So we're a little ahead with the approach work. Just a little bit bigger view of some aesthetics. Uh, the bridge section on top, um, with the trails, the lighting, uh, which, uh, Bruce will talk about a little bit later. Uh, some of the, uh, brickwork, the decorative structural brickwork, um, and then the end treatments on the bridge. Uh, in this picture, just a little blow up of the southbound to northbound ramp. Um, along that development, the, uh, Stone Meadows Town Home Association, there's going to be a noise wall. As part of the project, that was part of the noise analysis, what we had to do. It's approximately twenty feet high and looks similar to this. This is the noise wall that's along thirty-five. I'm sure you've seen it, that's very similar to the noise wall that'll be going up as part of this project, just along that ramp. The upcoming schedule, uh, an open house is the next step in the process. We'll talk about, again, things that we've done. We'll start to talk a little bit about the plans, about the amenities, um, about some of the construction staging discussions we've had, which I'll share with you in a little bit. Uh, that'll be in May or early June. The final plans, we anticipate to go to Mindot in June. Those are the approach plans. Uh, Mindot will run the bridge plans through their own approval process. We plan to let the project, uh, July or August of this year and then start construction this fall. With a lot of the bridge work and some of the ramp work going on this fall, bridge work over the winter. And then completing the entire project somewhere around that late summer, fall of twenty-fourteen. Part of the discussions that we've been having, originally, we were working with Mindot. We wanted to leave the signal in place because we felt that building all of the ramps first and keeping the intersection open to traffic, uh, would be the best approach. Then, once we had the r- ramps completed, then we were going to move the signal from its permanent location, a little bit farther north or east in that, in that area, to a location where it could lo- line up with, and I'll back up, with, um, if I could point, with this ramp, somewhere in this location with a temporary connection to utilize that ramp, uh, and only allow the left turn movements because that's the heavy, heavy P M movement. Mindot wasn't too enamored with that, uh, option. They felt that it would create a safety concern. So we started to look at possible fa- different phasing options and, uh, detour options. As part of our detour discussion, we looked at some of the other projects that were going on in the area. Obviously, they're going to impact, um, some of the possible detour options. Obviously, uh, County Road seventeen would, uh, rise to the top for a possible detour. But obviously, there's a lot of things going on in, on County Road seventeen this summer. So that was thrown out pretty quickly. Uh, some of the other overlay projects on twenty-fourteen, twenty-thirteen and twenty-fourteen. And then obviously, we have the river crossing project coming in twenty-fourteen. So what we did is, we first looked at this, at County Road seventeen for a detour, running the traffic, northbound traffic, over to seventeen, splitting it depending on which direction the traffic wanted to go, either back to the interchange or up seventeen. Obviously, putting an additional, anywhere from four to six thousand cars a day on seventeen, uh, through that area, whether we had a construction project or not, um, was really more than that area could handle. So that, we eliminated fairly quickly. As I mentioned, we considered the left turn option onto one sixty-nine, uh, and utilizing the ramps. And Mindot was not too happy about that option. So then the third option we looked at was using the fifteen interchange and using it just to run traffic down to fifteen, up the ramps, across the bridge, and then back down the ramps onto sixty-nine and back to the project. It's kind of a backwards movement. Uh, we were concerned that the traffic utilizing that detour, uh, or that option, were probably traffic that knew the area and we expected at least a good proportion, if not a majority of the traffic would probably find their way on fifteen into town and work through the city streets to their northerly destination. And only traffic that wasn't familiar with the area would actually make that backward movement back to one sixty-nine. As part of the discussion, we were ta- we also considered, um, how that would affect the construction project. Obviously, when we stage a project, it takes a little longer. Uh, when we're utilizing the ramps for detour traffic or to route traffic through the project, we have to make temporary connections to sixty-nine. Uh, at the locations where the ramps are going to connect to sixty-nine, that elevation is going to come up quite a bit to start to meet the grade that, for going over the bridge. So we would have a lot of contemporary construction, temporary connection, um, traffic running through the construction zone. And we fairly quickly started to talk about, is there a way we could detour the traffic and completely, uh, shut down the entire sixty-nine, one sixty-nine intersection? How, how would that affect construction? How much time could we save in construction? And ultimately, how much money could we save on the project? So we took a look and started a conversation with your staff about the possibility of using Veerling Drive as the detour to completely take the traffic out of that intersection. Um, and you can see here, some of the movements, uh, that the detour would mark. Um, the, we, as I mentioned before, we'd be adding about five thousand vehicles a day to the intersection of fifteen in Veerling. That's about, that would bring that intersection up to an equivalent of about what you have at Veerling in seventy-nine right now. So if you can kind of picture, uh, the traffic volumes through that intersection, that's what this intersection, the traffic volumes would move up to. We have one, uh, hurdle, well, I guess, from a construction or mobility standpoint, we have one hurdle. The discussions may v- bear out more hurdles than this one. But, uh, the obvious hurdle is to make the connection that isn't there in Veerling Drive. We initiated conversations with Mindot, uh, and the attempt to get them to recognize the savings in the project, the savings in the disruption to the traffic by being able to reduce the time that the construction took. And also, the safety components of getting the turning traffic off of one sixty-nine and six, at the sixty-nine intersection sooner. And also not having to move traffic through a construction zone for, uh, what will amount to probably fifteen to eighteen months of construction. And the discussions with them, at first, uh, didn't go quite so well. We had to kind of work through that. But Mindot has agreed that i- if this connection were constructed, uh, in a temporary manner for the detour and then removed at the end of the project, it's something that the, uh, the state money, the SAM money could participate in. And in the current estimates, we do have extra SAM money available. So it's, it's something that they would participate in. Again, it would be a temporary connection and removed at the end of construction. What, just a couple of comments before we get to, uh, questions. The estimated savings to the project that we've come up with based on, um, a more condensed schedule and having the contractor not have to phase his work is somewhere in the three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars over the life of the project, uh, total. And also, uh, probably saves about three months in the construction. So with that, I would stand for questions. I know, uh, Bruce wants to talk a little bit about the lighting, but.
Councilman Lehman.
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions, actually. The, uh, what's the, can you tell me what the distance is between that Veerling and the exit ramps? The future exit ramps on the north side of, uh, one sixty-nine? Does that meet the county spacing requirement?
That connection where the, uh, in, so you're talking from these ramp locations to this location here?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
It would meet the spacing.
The, uh, using Veerling as a al- alternate route goes right by top of Park, Lions Park. And anybody going into town is going to turn and go past Sweeney School and so on and so forth. And I don't know if these people know the neighborhood at all or the interchange on fifteen, which is kind of different than most. So I think signage is going to be key, even if it's slow park, children, whatever. Or the turn to go eastbound on one sixty-nine is before you actually get to one sixty-nine. It's kind of a backward exit ramp on fifteen. And then the, or west, I guess, east is a, you go across and then make your left.
Correct.
So, uh, you know, we're going to have to sign that real good so people know how to operate that. Um, the other question I had was, is it possible, under that, what'd you call it, SAN, SAM, SAM dollars? Is it possible that if, if, uh, the city had the wherewithal to make that a permanent connection, using that portion of them dollars, city kicks in the, the rest of it, put that portion in? And, uh, and just get it done instead of doing it twice? But you said their, their agreement was that it's temporary and it has to be removed afterward. That seems like government spending money that it shouldn't have to spend.
Uh, Mayor and Councilman, we started there with the conversation with Mindot. And, um, we talked about the possibility of, you know, use the picture to, as you can see, the way we have it drawn, it just kind of sits in your dead center. And you've got four lanes on this side and four lanes on this side. So obviously, we're going to have to do a little bit of transitioning on the ends to make this work. We did start the discussion of putting the two lanes entirely on, so basically, building just one's half of the road and using that, uh, building it to a permanent structure, not a temporary detour structure. And then allowing the city, at whatever time, they would coordinate a project to come back, build the other half, put all the utilities on that side, um, and the storm sewer and all of the things that would have to be there permanently. So that this side would still function as kind of a temporary road, but at least structure-wise, it was built strong enough so that it could be utilized. That didn't go very far with Mindot. So we started with that discussion.
Why?
And have kind of arrived at, it has to be a temporary connection to be.
Why didn't it go far, Mitch?
For the, because now we're building something permanent with state money, not on the state system.
Well, we'll make a state aid road if they like.
You can use, you can use state money to manage the traffic on a construction project because it's for the state project. But you, and this is the interpretation we got, you can't use state money to build something permanent that's not on the state system. Correct?
Mayor? Can the city build that temporary road for, for them?
Not with their money.
And get reimbursed?
Uh, Mayor and council member, I, it doesn't matter who builds the road. It can't be the s- the state SAM money, the safety money that pays for it.
Unless they build it.
Well, they won't even build it because it's not part of the state's system.
Okay, but they're going to build a temporary road and they're going to pay for it out of SAM money.
Correct. It's a, it's a detour connection that's removed, it's for the construction, only the construction, not its per-. And obviously, the cost difference is a fifth of what you would put in there for a permanent road.
Do we get the opportunity to approve this? I mean, does it have to come through us in order to, for this to get done?
They'll just extend the, the cost of the bridge and the length of the time to build the bridge and make the alternative route more painful, so.
Yeah. Mayor and members of council, we will bring back final plans when they're ready. But as we've, we've discussed this several times, there's just, the state cannot spend money on a permanent roadway. And, uh, one of the things is, you know, we'll have some notification to the residents nearby and we'll have an open house. There might be a little bit of upsetness because they're making this connection, but some people might like it. There might even be more upsetness when we take it out. So, you know, it, it, so a lot of people, they may not understand why we have to operate with this, the system that we have to operate. But that's, it has to be a temporary road and it has to come out.
Um, Mayor, council members, um, Lisa just informed me that, and this is how fluid this actually is, that she just had a conversation yesterday afternoon, uh, with the Mindot personnel we're working with. And they have said that if we did want to go to the permanent connection, whether it's two lanes now or four lanes now, that the SAM money could be used to the level, uh, or to equal to what the temporary connection would be. So we do a little estimate on what the temporary connection would cost. We can use that much SAM money towards the permanent. We just can't use the SAM money to build the full structure. Whatever, whatever they would be willing to contribute for the temporary connection can be put towards a permanent project, which is a, a good compromise and a reasonable solution, I think.
I like that. Councilman Wayne.
Uh, we've discussed this road and this connection in the past. Uh, when did we have this planned?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Uh, when did we have this in our, uh, that was, I held it back, but, um, thank you. When was this part of our planning?
Um, well, we tried to, let's see if I get this up. We submitted application for cooperative agreement with Mindot and was not successful in obtaining any money from Mindot. There's a cooperative agreement process. It has to benefit the state system and they determined it did not really benefit the state system. Kind of, some of the arguments that Mitch referred to, that you can't spend money, you know, permit money. But now I hear that we might be able to spend a portion of it. But this is a design that we had come up with. So, and it, and later on in our discussion, I'll give you an update on the land acquisition where we're at.
Okay.
So this is an economic development opportunity for the city. We're getting close to getting a proposal from Mindot, which we'll bring back to council. And then we'd have to make a decision, uh, when do we want to bring sewer and water in here, improve the street? And, uh, there's some potential other funding sources that we could look at, potentially. So this thing is pretty, is moving, I didn't know about the, uh, potential use of the money for permanent. We'd have to look at that. But, and as Mitch is going to talk to schedule, it's going to get real tight here. We'll get out for bids in July, we're, we're moving pretty fast.
My next part of my question, we had this in the plan. So is it still able to get this road in place in our planning to the full extent that we want? In time to be able to utilize it as a, as the detour?
I would have to check into that. It's going to be really, really tight, how quickly we could get something designed. We have an alignment, but that's it. We didn't do any more, you know, just enough of it to design to submit an application to Mindot. So we have a lot of work to do, getting survey, getting soil borings, coming up with a design if we were to move to a more permanent. But that's saying it can't be done, but we'd have to get moving.
Councilman Lehman.
Can we, uh, offset the difference between the temporary two lane to a permanent two lane? And then come back into the other half? Once we get our sewer and water and plans and all these stuff in our CIP.
Some of the, some of the things we have to really look at, the sewer and water lines are right in the middle of the roadway here now. At Taylor Street, because we built, we have built Verling Drive to here. We'd have to somehow offset those lines, get them out of the way, or we're gonna have to dig up a portion of the street later on when we want to extend them. I don't know if we're ready to extend sewer and water yet. You know, we don't really have that economic development figured out what we want to do in that area. So the best thing we could do is build a half of the roadway system. And again, we'd have to look at the, what is the cost? What is the additional cost that we're talking about? And do we want to fund that now, or do we want to later on, okay, take that out? Maybe it makes sense to take it out, put the sewer and water in, put the permanent street in and assess that to the benefiting property. And come up with a development proposal that we can recoup that cost. There's some dynamics here. I mean, I didn't know about this deal today, so, till now. But if that's a potential that it makes sense, we'll bring it back to you, but. What Mitch, what we're really talking about. Is this detour, whether it be temporary or semi-permanent or permanent, or is that an acceptable route? The traffic volume is such, I mean, Verling Drive is a four lane road, so it, it can handle the traffic. And, um, it does make some sense from a time saving, does make some sense from a safety aspect for the construction workers as well as the motoring public. And, um, it's something we've always, we wanted to make this connection. That's why I wanted to get that application, and if we could have got money from MINDOT, we would have made this connection in conjunction with this project, we would have had that. But it didn't work out that way.
Councilman Whiting.
Well, I, after looking at the map, I think it's about the only detour route that we can establish for that. I, I don't see any other options. To me, but to, to build that at a temporary level, since we've been talking about it since last year, you know, getting that in as a permanent connection. That doesn't make any sense to me at all, whether it's our money or the state's money. It, it makes sense to at least build half of that road and, and redirect the, you know, to a full, full level.
Could you go back to the, uh, schedule for me, Mitch? All right, so we are, the project starts fall of twenty-four, thirteen and twenty-fourteen. Um. Will the detour be in place that entire time?
Uh, Mayor, yes.
So it's a twelve month detour?
Yes, because the, over the winter, as long as the weather is. Not frigid, we anticipate they'll continue to work on the bridge.
Okay.
And again, you, you recoup the entire, the maximum amount of savings if you don't have to have any temporary connections, and that includes connections over the winter.
Okay. Um, now can you go to the detour map for me, please? My biggest concern about this detour is, um, where Tapa Park, the driveway for Tapa Park empties out to the east of Tapa, right at the, uh, southbound one sixty-nine off-ramp. Right there, exactly, when, um, during the summer, when ballgames are getting out, um, that intersection is. Uh, beyond its capacity and there have been a lot of intersection, uh, accidents and things there. What? What do you expect to happen when we introduce all this new traffic onto that intersection specifically?
Um, we have not had, uh, Tony Winicki is our traffic engineer. He did the analysis for the intersection of fifteen and Veerling, Veerling.
Okay.
I don't believe he's done an analysis there. We'd have to make some assumptions on traffic volumes and, um, obviously when the ball. Games are getting out, that's not the peak time. I would expect that we're gonna see the traffic using the detour for the sixty-nine, one sixty-nine intersection. That's pretty, a, a pretty good majority of that traffic is centered around the AM peak and the PM peak because it's, uh, traffic coming out that way, heading south. Then coming back from the south and, and heading into town or across the river. Uh, we can take a look at that. We'll have Tony take a look at that, make some assumptions. Again, even when ball, when the ball games get out, that's a pretty short peak. I mean, it's just a big bubble.
Yeah, exactly.
Fifteen minutes, you've got a lot of cars coming out and then things settle down again.
Right.
But we can take a look at that.
Yeah, if you could, and so would it include, would the speed limit be reduced through there during this time?
We would analyze that, make a determination. We have the ability to change the speed limits during construction on, through detours.
Okay. Yeah, if you could look at those things for me, I would very much appreciate it. Any other questions? Councilman Lehman.
I, I actually agree, and I stated that earlier, that I think the other problem is gonna be the folks that are coming using Veerling and then going. South on fifteen, back to one sixty-nine and then trying to go east on one sixty-nine. There, if they don't know that on-ramp, they're gonna be looking to the right when it's actually to the left and it's before the highway. So I think signage is gonna be critical in this, probably throughout the whole construction zone, but normally in a construction site, you just kind of look for the. Blazed orange signs and they're like telling you different things, telling you how to get back to where you're going, you know, and when it's done properly, it works good. So I think the key is to make sure it's done properly and it's really informative.
Perfect.
Marsh, Marshall Road ain't gonna work, that's for sure, so.
Okay. All right, any other, uh, questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
The next part, Mr. Looney? Sorry, Chris.
Okay, next item. I talk about the bridge lights. And, uh, I had sent an email to everybody and we did, uh, bring up the bridge lighting. Issue and, uh, the question would be power, who pays for it? And pictures again, we have six bridge lights that we're gonna have on the bridge, and they're kind of the aesthetic lights, they're gonna have a nice pole, acorn fixture, LED lights. Go through this quickly. And again, you, you can just see, and I want to make a point here that the bridge lights or the bridge pole will be bronze, kind of to match in more with the aesthetics. Um, that are, we're showing that, that will be incorporated as part of the bridge. The lights that we have in the other pad bridges are green and I, I think the conclusion was that was not gonna be, look too good. This is a picture of the, uh. Of a Wash, it's called a Washington post light. That's kind of the acorn fixture we looked at, and it'll go on to, it's called a Charleston pole. It'll be a very attractive looking pole on the bridge. Well, the, the issue that we have is that this bridge and most of the project is not in the city limits of Shakopee. It also is not in Spock service territory. It's in Minnesota Valley. This blue line here is Shakopee Public Utility Territory. Here's where the bridge interchange is, right in here in this area. And here's our city limit line. Right in here. The red line. So, just to make a short, this story short, it's not in the city limits, it's not in Spock service territory. We estimate the cost of the power to be around two hundred and fifty dollars a year for the six. Six lights and the county or state does not pay for electric power on aesthetic bridge lights. That's their kind of policy. The state will pick up the lights on the interchange of all the intersections and the ramps, but not on aesthetic bridge lights. So, question for us is, do we want those lights lit or not when the bridge is open? Or want to wait until we annex the area or Spock takes over the territory? And Shakopee Public Utilities cannot really extend their territory unless we annex an area. So, that's kind of the situation.
Councilman Lehman.
How about solar lights?
Solar lights? Could look into that, I guess.
Well, the, the.
Turn the lights on during the daytime.
The problem is, is now we're gonna be paying for lighting on a county road outside of the city jurisdiction. What a precedence to set. See, the county, we should set a policy like the county did. We don't pay for lighting outside of the city of Shakopee. County's policy is they don't pay for lighting, period, on bridges or on county roads. So, I mean, if they're fine with that policy, I'd be fine if the city did the same.
Councilman Whiting.
Has there been a conversation with, uh, Minnesota Valley? Would they be interested in?
Well, no, we have not, I have not had a conversation with them. I mean, I'm sure they'll power the lights for us and, and charge us for that. That's usually their policy.
We just set up a joint powers agreement with Jackson Township, have them pay for it.
We could do that, too. I don't know how far that would go, but.
As far as MINDOT and the temporary road.
Yeah.
Councilman Whiting.
You know, I, I think this area is, um, really a part of Shakopee, even though it isn't on the maps and, and I think in the future. This will be a part of Shakopee. Uh, Jackson Township will come, come along dragging their feet, but we'll, they'll all be good for everybody in the end. But I think, you know, we can't shortchange ourselves and say that, you know, we don't want to put something aesthetic on there, you know, for a couple hundred bucks a year to light the thing. It, it doesn't seem like a lot. Now, I was gonna say we should add flower pots, but. Don't want to go there, but, uh, the lights, to me, it's a small price to pay for that coming into Shakopee kind of feel.
You know, if we do solar, we could probably get a federal grant for that.
I didn't hear that.
Federal grant for going, uh, solar, clean energy.
Suppose we could check into that? I got a lot of time on my hands. How about you, Mitch?
Yeah, exactly.
No. We could check with MINDOT, you know, the MINDOT designers, but typically that is not something done, but.
Check and see if solar is an option.
We could see if that's an option.
If that, that makes perfect sense for there, if it does.
In the meantime.
But if it does.
Designing the bridge, so they'll, we'll have to check with them and see if it's a possibility, but I'm looking at, you're gonna have these solar panels somewhere in order to have solar lights. So the attractiveness of that, I think you need to factor that in.
It's just a smaller than solar panel.
I think we're a few years out.
I think. Councilman Clay.
We could check into it.
I'll make a motion to have staff check into solar option, but otherwise plan on having the city. Pay for the lighting for however, many years it takes until our orderly annexation agreement with Jackson, you know, brings that section into the city limits. Um, and budget wise, um, who's not here? Linehan, let's, uh, to the finance department.
Hey, there you go.
Do you want the, uh, aesthetics, the type as recommended?
Yeah.
Second by Councilman Whiting, any discussion? Do you have everything you need on that?
I believe so.
All right, seeing no discussion, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Councilman Lehman.
Make a motion approving the proposed detour plan utilizing Veerling Drive from sixty-nine to fifteen. Noting the, uh, concerns by council of, uh. Traffic direction, speed and parks and so on and so forth.
Second.
Same by Councilman Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. All right.
All right.
Do you need anything else from us?
No, just a quick update on the property acquisition. It, uh, so that everybody knows what's going on, it's kind of fits into this temporary road in the project. And I don't know how well it shows up, but the green area outlined, let's see, I'll have to use the mouse here. There, this area is called parcel forty-three. It's about twenty-three point five acres. And there's another parcel here, looks like about two point one acres. It's, it's in blue. Our records show that's owned by MINDOT. And there's another area over here, the old truck stop, that's in, uh, kind of a mauve color. And the interchange is coming in here and there might even be some excess right away south of parcel forty-three. So, we're looking, we're asking MINDOT, you know, it's time to them, we get the first crack at excess property that they own. One of the things here, when we designed this roadway, it's a hundred and seventy-two thousand square feet. MINDOT has indicated to me they would donate that right away at no charge to the city. That's good. Cause we'll get that right away and we'll be able to build a, a road on it. The parcel forty-three, the original purchase is about seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand for twenty-three point five acres, which is about thirty-three thousand eight hun, uh, four hundred and eighty-six dollars an acre. We did pay a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for a portion of parcel forty-three. We built a portion of Verling Drive and a pond. Over on parcel forty-three, so we have hit, we have put money down on that parcel. We sent this drawing about the future of Verling Drive I mentioned to you, it's about four acres. Essentially, if you use the price per acre that they paid for it, it's worth potentially a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So, they verbally have agreed to give us that right away at no cost. So if you take the original purchase price minus what we've paid for it so far and the equivalent donation, remaining price would be about five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Now that's my take on it. I haven't got a confirmation from MINDOT, but that's what I'm asking them to comment on. They have also talked about that two point one acre parcel, that little rectangular sliver. They could donate that to us at no cost. And MINDOT has to do an appraisal on that truck stop parcel, and they're gonna, they're gonna appraise it as a clean parcel, which means they would have to clean it up if there's any contamination there. And they're gonna appraise that at a, whatever that price comes out, and then that would be given to us to consider for purchase. And there could be some excess right away south of parcel forty-three, as I mentioned before. So, what I see here is a very good epic economic development opportunity. If we're gonna obtain this land, of course you'll be, bring back to council, you'll have to make a decision whether or not we want to purchase this parcel or not. And, um, if we don't, we still would get the right away for Verling Drive. That would be given to us no matter what we do. So that's a quick update. The other, the other part of this puzzle is there was a deferred assessment. When we assessed Verling Drive, there was a portion of that that was assessed to this parcel. About eighty-some thousand dollars and there's quite a bit of interest on it now since it's been sitting there since ninety-eight. But that's on this parcel. And if we ever did put sewer and water in and some other street improvements, we'd have other assessments that would go to this parcel. So with that, that's just a quick update, just to let you know what's going on. And if you had any questions in regards to that or take it right now.
Councilman Lehman.
Who's, who was the parcel that has the deferred assessment on it?
Parcel forty-three, MINDOT. That's the one that we're negotiating on. They will not pay, just so you know, they will not pay an assessment. That assessment will be transferred to whoever owns the parcel.
Well. But if the city purchased that property, the city could waive its, its assessments to itself.
That's, that's a possibility.
Or, and or transfer it to a future buyer.
Correct. That, that'd be a future deci- decision, yep.
It's, uh, it's both parcels. That's truck stop and this is.
Is the assessment from the stormwater and those kinds of things on Veerling, is that what that assessment is from?
Um, let's see, I don't know if you could, I can blow it up here a little bit. Let's see, this area, this area of Verling Drive, and there's a pond over here, we had to purchase that equivalent acreage. That's, we paid that thirty-three thousand dollars per acre price. We needed about three acres or so. So that's, we've already purchased that for this Verling Drive.
Beautiful.
Okay, that's all I have.
Is this something that would be, something we direct to the Economic Development Advisory Commission to take a look at, seeing if this is something that would be, uh, a fu- future purchase for us?
Uh, I think we've already, we've already, as council, given direction that it is a future purchase for us, but as it comes into play, I think that it will definitely go through them to. Decide how it's utilized. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And as always, your aesthetics are impeccable. Um, all right, ten F one, software selection for new city website. Um, all right, ten F one, software selection for new city website.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This agenda item, as the mayor noted, is the software selection for the new city website. A project that we have been talking about and making plans and lists and things for about eight or nine months now. The recommendation being brought forward tonight is staff's recommendation that we hire a company called Vision Internet to design and create and host the city's new website. And they will also then provide the software that staff will use to update the website. The upfront purchase price with Vision Internet is twenty-seven thousand four fifty-five. And the annual cost for them to host and maintain the site for us is sixty-six hundred dollars per year. There are four main reasons why this is the recommendation coming forward. First is that Vision's sites provide the desired features for our end users, and we can get into discussing those more in detail in a moment. Ease of use for staff in keeping the website updated. It's a comprehensive solution. It provides everything that the city needs in one package. And Vision has a proven track record. They've been in business for eighteen years. They have approximately five hundred clients in thirty-eight states, and they specialize in local government entities, websites specifically for local government entities. Really quick, I would like to give you a kind of first impressions tour of a bit of their work at Vision Internet. I'm just gonna flip through a couple of sites really quickly. This is Elk Grove Village, Illinois. Hermosa Beach, California. Chapel Hill, North Carolina. Park City, Utah. Sheboygan County, Wisconsin. Bend, Oregon. Glastonbury, Connecticut. Plymouth, Minnesota. And Eden Prairie, Minnesota. Those are just sampling of, like I said, they have approximately five hundred clients in total. While we think the first impression of the website is very important, you know, we're definitely looking for something that's not just a pretty face. And what Vision offers us is a lot more than that. I wanted, I included a list of the features that our new site would, would have with Vision Internet in my memo. I wasn't intending to walk through each and every one of those, but I did want to show you just a couple that staff and the website task force see as key. One is the searchability of the website, and using Plymouth's site as an example. While you were discussing transit earlier this meeting, I decided to search Plymouth's site. So, I got two hundred and eighty-five results just in that time that we were looking there. Once I'm on their site, I can sort the results. So, I keep all of the results. I just put them in a different order. I can sort by relevance, date that they were published, size of the document, or file type. I can also browse by category, which means I can narrow the field. I can see all, which is what it defaults to. Can see only documents, only events, and only news. So, if I take my two hundred and eighty-five results for transit and I click on news, it's gonna say it found ten results that were news items about the transit service that the city of, of Plymouth offers. So, that's a quick demo of their search features. Calendar has been another thing that, oh, come on. We wanna see, Chapel Hill provides a good example of the calendar features that Vision offers. You can see, you can choose your view of the calendar. You can view just today, the next seven days, the next thirty days. If you click on the next seven days, it's going to give you everything that's going on in a list format. You can click on it, and it will tell you more about that event.
Stream their council meeting?
Excuse me?
Can we stream their council meeting tonight?
Not sure. We can also narrow the field by department, so I can look for only events in the Parks and Recreation Department. It'll tell me there are none in the next seven days, but there are some in the next thirty days. I can also stream by category. They've kind of put in every single type of meeting, I think they have, in their categories. But these are our choices of what categories we would create in our own calendar. So, that is an example of the calendar. Screen size is another issue. We, one of the goals of our new website is to have something that is more mobile friendly. The city's current website is very static. It'll, if you come to it on a smartphone or a tablet, you just get a tiny little view of the existing website. It doesn't adjust at all. And so, one of the things that Vision has done is, and it's becoming increasingly common for places to have a full website in a mobile version of their website. Vision's adjusts with the size of your browser. So, this is considered their full site. But as I shrink the browser, it realigns things, and it moves the things that were over here and puts them down below. And as I get very small, eventually I get to their full mobile site. So, it can tell the si- not just what device I'm on, but what size of a browser I have. And it reorders, adds or drops pictures and components out of the system based on that. And the last site I wanted to show you a bit of is Elk Grove, Illinois. I have several things on this site that we're looking to have on our new site. One of them being what they call service requests. This is part of the system, part of the price that has been quoted to us, is we can set up a service request form. So, a resident can come in here, select a topic. Again, the topics are determined by us locally of what topics we want in there. So, say I wanna submit a request about, or a question about property maintenance. First thing it does is, once I've chosen property maintenance, it says, hmm, here's a couple possible answers to your questions. Let's see if we can save you from even having to submit this request. If neither one of these are the thing I was looking for, now I can go in and give a subject a location. I can upload a picture. So, if it's a damaged street sign in my neighborhood, or a pothole, or a park swing that was broken when they were at a park with their kids that they wanna report to be fixed, you know, they can add a picture of that. They provide us their information and they send that. We have it set up on our end so that it specifically goes to a specific staff person, depending on which drop-down category they select. So, that's their, in a nutshell, their request tracker. There, if you did actually sign up and give them your email and so forth, it would send you a confirmation that your email had been received. And then staff can easily use the system to respond back to the person with a, you know, not just the auto generate, thank you, your comment's been received, but, you know, we expect the stop sign to be replaced, you know, within the next two days, or whatever the answer to their service request or their question might be. Uh, this also provides a link into their department directory, so you can see all of their city departments. You can use this for a staff directory, a department directory. You can use it for a business directory, from an economic development standpoint. You know, sort it by alphabetical, or I can sort by department and see all of their police numbers. So, we'd be getting a directory like this. And then the last thing I would show you on here, this is their cal- If I click on an event here, it goes in here, because this is recognized by the system as an address automatically. I click on it, and it's gonna automatically Google, Google map the site of whatever that event is. So, if we've got something at Huber Park, or Lions Park, or wherever it may be, our residents will find that automatic easy link into a map. They will also find this option over here, which says add to my calendar. So, if I have an Outlook calendar, an iCalendar, a Google calendar, or Yahoo calendar, I can click on this and say, oh, I wanna, you know, go to that concert in the park, or go to that planning commission meeting. It'll be an easy way for people to add it to their calendar, so. The timeline we would envision, if council approves the recommendation tonight, is that design on the graphic look of the site will begin in the next few weeks, working in conjunction with the website task force that you appointed last fall. We would expect to have the design templates and be fairly well set on what the site is going to look like in the first part of the summer. Spend the second part of the summer heavily involved in loading content into the website, and then launch in the fall. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Lehman?
The six thousand dollars a year fee, what does that buy us?
Mm-hmm. The annual cost, they would host the site for us on their servers. That means they provide, you know, the security and making sure that it is up twenty-four seven, which is something we don't necessarily have the ability to do with our two-person IT staff hosting it locally. Unlimited maintenance, unlimited tech support. We can call, ask for help at any time with no additional fees. It also provides us, after paying that annual cost for four years, it provides us with a free redesign of the site, so we can get a fresh look on our site every four years.
Councilwoman Whiting?
In addition to the tech services, is there any training involved that you can use, get from the company?
The price quote we're showing you, which is what we think we need, provides us with several days of remote training. This company is located out on the west coast, so they would use, you know, go to meeting and, and different services to train our employees on how to use their software and how to update the site. So, lots of training, just all remote.
Councilman Clay?
These six thousand six hundred per year, is that locked into a certain minimum or maximum increase for the next five years or anything like that? Do I have to worry about it being ten, you know, another ten thousand dollars higher next year?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. We have checked references on the company with other cities, and they've all been very happy. And none of them have mentioned, you know, shocking price increases. I can certainly go back and clarify that in the contract.
Be nice to maybe write some sort of limit for the next few years in there.
Councilman Lehman?
The service request portion, does, does the system have the ability for staff that's running this on our end to, I assume if somebody's gonna put a service request in there, they have to give an email address or something to return?
Yes.
I'm wondering if somebody wanted to abuse that system. Let's say, turn in four or five hundred complaints or something. Do we have the ability to not allow that to happen?
Or block certain users?
Well, if they're abusing it.
I don't know the answer to that question. I believe it does have the spam blocker. You know, sometimes when you fill out a form online, it gives you that muddled set of letters to type in to prove that you're a human being entering that complaint and not the software. But I don't know, if somebody really wanted to sit there and enter four hundred complaints by hand?
Yeah, I would, I would assume.
Oh, gotta introduce yourself.
Krista Holz, I'm the communications coordinator for the city.
Oh, hello.
Hi. I would assume that as the maintenance, Vision Internet would be in charge of maintenance, that they would be in charge of also controlling the spam and running the backend of the website from that. So, if we did have a user, we could contact them and be in connection with them, so that they could, you know, block one if we're having issues with them.
Okay.
Councilwoman Whiting?
This is the annual price. Was there any contract involved for a certain amount of years that they'd be hosting, or is it a every-year re-up?
It's, you pay the annual cost every year.
Right.
In, in.
But you don't sign a contract that you're gonna guarantee that you're gonna be involved with them for three years?
You don't. You want to be to get back your initial investment in the site. But no, we don't have to, you know, legally bind ourselves to them for three years or four years. If we were willing to walk away from that initial investment after a shorter period of time, that would certainly be our right.
Councilor Sherman, did you have something you were gonna say earlier?
No, no, I was gonna talk about this.
Perfect. Any other questions? Thank you. I appreciate you exploring open source things for me and looking at that. Thank you very much. Do we, I gotta open this back up here. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Whiting?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the design and development of the new city website using the services of Vision Internet at a one-time cost of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and an annual hosting and maintenance fee of six thousand six hundred dollars.
Do we have a second? Second by Councilwoman Clay. Any discussion? Councilman Lehman?
Do we wanna add a friendly amendment to see if staff can ask this company what the expected increase per year is on the maintenance fees?
I think we should be giving that information, sure. Take that as an amendment.
Councilor, Mr. Thompson, hold on just a second.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I noticed that in the action sort, it did not specifically say enter into the contract. I think that's probably part of the action you want here, too, so we don't have to come back to the council for the contract. So, I'm assuming that's also part of the motion directing appropriate city officials to enter into the contract.
Okay, Councilwoman Whiting, you concur?
I would take that as a amendment, yeah.
Councilman Clay?
I'm fine.
Okay. Any further discussion? Councilman Lehman?
I need to know if the second to the motion is okay with the friendly amendment.
I just said I won't.
He said he was.
Oh, alright.
So, you wanna report back on what their anticipated annual increase will be?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, item number eleven, council member reports. Councilwoman Whiting?
Well, thank you. Last couple of weeks ago, I don't have the data, we, I had the opportunity to meet with the EDAC for some training, along with some other groups, attended the scale board meeting. Some of the items that are coming out of that, future topics will be landfills and some, where is that? Possible, another update from the First Stop Shop, CDA TAP grants, some other ideas, education workshops and real estate information and workshops. That's coming up in May. April was landfills and legislative update from scale. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Councilman Clay?
I attended the Utilities Commission meeting yesterday and forgot to bring my notes. I'll catch you up next time.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lehman?
Being ill the last two weeks, I didn't do a whole lot.
You look remarkably better, by the way.
I'm getting there.
And you, you were back on your game tonight, so that was good.
I'm getting there.
I can add a Derby Days update for you if you like.
I read the minutes. It was just pretty much standard.
They are moving towards a button system, so that Friday and Saturday night, you'll need a button to enter, to come see the band. How that's gonna be handled logistically has yet to be determined, but that's something new for Derby Days.
Wait until it gets adopted before I go that far.
Well, yeah, it's, it's semi-adopted, yep.
All right, Councilor Sherman?
I have no updates.
On the twenty-first, I attended the Habitat for Humanity dedication of three homes in Shakopee. And so, that was really good to see the new families moving to Shakopee with Habitat for Humanity and how hard they worked on their homes. So, that was a great meeting. On the twenty-sixth, Janet Williams from Savage, myself, and other mayors from the regional council mayors had a press conference supporting the governor's quarter cent sales tax for dedicated toward transit. Then, tomorrow, I will be testifying for Emerson's sales tax exemption in front of the House Tax Committee. So, that is going on tomorrow as well. So, that part is moving forward on the Emerson front. That is all I've got. Any other business? Item number twelve?
See if you get a tax break for me, too, while you're there.
Done. I will, I'll put you first on the list, counselor. Any other business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty thirteen. Councilman Lehman?
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, March nineteenth at seven P.M.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Sherman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. We are adjourned at nine forty-six.